Council meeting. Where can you please take the roll?
Herman?
Here.
Mugrower?
Here.
Crowsey?
Here.
Peschall?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Present seven.
And Deputy Mayor Herman will lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. Mayor's decision tonight improved the quality of our life in our city and for our citizens who we all represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen Bowen and Michael Rust, if you'll join me up front. We next have a proclamation for Civility Month. Whereas the city of Oshkosh is known as a friendly, welcoming community that serves as a destination for many due to its status as Wisconsin's event city and whereas the city of Oshkosh offers an exceptionally strong quality of life that attracts individuals and organizations to live, work, study, and enjoy the beauty of our immediate surroundings. And whereas the city, the Oshkosh Civility Project founded in 2010 is based on the work of Dr. P.M. Forney and his book Choosing Civility. And whereas on June 14, 2011, the Oshkosh Common Council adopted Resolution 11-270, declaring its support for the Oshkosh Civility Project and incorporated its principles into council's operating rules. And whereas the Civility Project has been active and engaged in community, regional, and broader efforts to promote understanding and awareness of how communication patterns impact others. And whereas the Civility Project is supporting an initiative during the month of August 2019 to advance the cause of civility and the shared understanding of the importance of our actions and conduct. Now therefore, I, Lori Palmieri, Mayor of the city of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim that the month of August 2018 shall be known as Civility Month in the city of Oshkosh. That people are encouraged to reaffirm the principles of the Oshkosh Civility Pledge, which states, "We build a stronger and more diverse community by actively sharing our ideas and opinions with others in thoughtful and considerate ways. By practicing this basic commitment to civility, we learn and grow from one another, even in disagreement."
Thank you very much, Mayor Palmieri. And on behalf of the Civility Project, I would like to present you with a raft here of posters and cards, which the cards contain our nine principles of civility. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the first round of citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
Yes, I do. Ronald Chaplin, 411 Ohio Street.
Good evening. I come before you as a citizen of Oshkosh with a concern that not only addresses me, but I believe could potentially address other people. My concern that I have is with the billing cycle for the water department. I received a bill on or about the 11th of July. It was due on August 1st. I received a notice on August 5th that I was delinquent. I got a text notice from my landlord saying that if I was delinquent again, that I would be kicked out. That gives me about a four-day window. Now, I don't even get paid until the 5th of every month, so there is absolutely no room for me to be delinquent in this whatsoever. I feel that there are, I'm sure, more citizens that have a similar issue where they get paid on a certain date and they can't meet that first. So my concern is that there's no flexibility within the system. I don't even know how to adjust my billing date, if there's even that option. As far as I can tell from the website, there's no flexibility. It's just a locked date. So I'm asking that the city council review this and try and get some flexibility in the system so that I can pay my bill on time, you know, a day or two, maybe five days extra. I don't know, something. I know it used to be a greater period of time from due date to when you would actually get your delinquency notice. I'm not asking for anything absorbent, you know, but just a little flexibility. Thank you.
And Mr. Chaplin?
Yes.
Did your billing date change with the new monthly billing by chance?
I honestly don't know. I don't think it did. But there's, I know the billing date has actually been adjusted throughout multiple days, so I can't even pre-plan, I mean, I can look at it, but I can't predict how much water I'm going to use. So I don't, and that's not even really the concern. It's not the concern of being able to pay it. It's just, give me some time to pay it, you know, taking into consideration, I don't get paid till the 5th. And if you're going to send me a notice on the 5th when I'm trying to go down to the water department and pay it, you know, what's, yeah, it just doesn't seem to give me much flexibility there, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Elaf?
Sure.
Do we have an opportunity to follow up on that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to follow up and have staff get ahold of them. I know Mr. Van Campel is looking at our current process and just seeing if it's, especially with going to the new monthly system, if we can make some adjustments.
Councilmember Peschall?
Sure. Do we have any, I mean, does the finance department operate with some level of flexibility if someone's not completely paid up or, you know, when they're due, so?
We do work with, there was something that you received today, Ms. Reese. We will work with people to put them on a payment plan if necessary, but I think this gentleman is talking about something on a more regular basis and we could, I'll work with staff tomorrow on that issue.
Okay.
Councilmember Crowsey?
Is there a reason why we chose four days for a delinquency? Because usually it's a little more than that, you know, like maybe we get a 1% late fee, but four days, that's a tight window.
Yeah, that's why I want to check and see what the facts are from staff because four days seems pretty short, but I'm not sure when exactly the bill goes out and when the bill's received.
And are each customer going to get the bill on the same exact due date every month? Because citizens came to me and said that their out payment, or they get money put in their account specifically for certain bills and they were charged early and then they were, got an NSF.
It depends on what district you're in. So my bill is due on the 9th, so, but I think there's others in the city that vary because of the new billing system.
But they'll pay on the same day every month?
Yes, they will, you'll pay on the same day every month, yes.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else registered for citizen statements?
Travis Brand, 451 Hazel Street.
Hi. I'd like to thank the members of the council who voted for the fee to replace the special specimens for road reconstruction and the engineering and finance folks who put it together. According to the mailers we received, the average lifespan of our road being replaced is 30 years. Under the proposed fee, I would be paying only $1,350 over the lifespan of the road. This is a quarter of what I am paying under the current plan. I think it really needs to be motivated to change that. It's, where is that money going if I could be paying, you know, a quarter of what I'm, what I received in the bill? And that is only for the concrete section, not the sewer or sanitary or water. I also think that an ad hoc committee is redundant and prone to bias. I would again like to express the solution presented by the engineering and finance group seems very fair and equitable.
Mr. Brand, can I just interrupt you just one moment, please?
Mm-hmm.
So the ad hoc committee is on the agenda later. Does council wish to allow Mr. Brand to continue?
Yes.
Okay, now, out of order? Okay, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't, there was confusion over whether it was, which?
You're good.
Meeting.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think that an ad hoc committee is redundant and prone to bias. I would like to, I think that the solution provided by the engineering and finance group is very fair. And I'm opposed to the creation of a wheel tax as it would unfairly benefit commercial interests who would be able to avoid payment by registering vehicles in other locations or should be the burden of paying onto their employees who use personal vehicles instead of, you know, company-owned vehicles, instead of, you know, for the space that they use. I think that it would concentrate the burden on the residents, the people who have to register vehicles here because they live here and just, I don't think it'd be fair to everyone here. And then I'd like to say that even if this doesn't pass soon enough to benefit me personally, I know my bill, that's not here nor there, but it should be, a fair solution should be priority for this council. There have been complaints in the past that, oh, you know, because it wasn't, you know, it's a year or two late for my bill, you know, I'm opposed to this because I'd still be having to pay that 45 fee. It's for, you know, I'd be paying four times as much, and if I can spare someone in the future that's by paying double, then by all means, make it a priority to get some fair solution. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have anyone else registered?
Eric Andres, 3071 Fond du Lac Road.
Hello, thank you. I was here previously to talk about the feral cat problem I had at the property I rent. I first came to speak about my disagreements with the policy of going to the Humane Society to rent live traps and then trapping the animals yourself and then bringing them to the Humane Society yourself. Then I came to speak about an issue of liability because I disagreed with the conclusion that trapping the cat was treated at your own risk like wildlife because true wildlife is handled differently by professionals, but you don't necessarily have that option with a cat. I'll get to why I'm here a third time in a moment, but I first want to acknowledge that after my second statement, the police department reached out to the Humane Society, who then reached out to me. They clarified that I should have been told that someone from the Humane Society can come and pick up the trapped cats, and they offered to assist me in my continued attempts to trap the remaining four cats I'd seen after I'd trapped three kittens. I do appreciate that. The day I spoke a second time, I had brought in three kittens to the Humane Society that I'd trapped the night before, as I'd been told to do. The traps and the area where they had been trapped on my patio had their fecal matter, which I tried to avoid by wearing gloves and washing my hands, as well as making sure the back of my car had plastic to set the traps on. I did however have to remove my gloves without a chance to wash my hands at the Humane Society in order to fill out paperwork. Roughly less than a week later, I started having what I'll describe as gastrointestinal distress very frequently every day. After the fifth day of this, I worried something was seriously wrong, so I went to the emergency room. The next day, I was diagnosed with a parasite infection. One of the ways you can catch this is by coming to close contact with animals and animal feces. And by the way, people can actually potentially die from this parasite infection. Fortunately, there is a prescription drug that you can take for this. I had to drive down to Fond du Lac to get it. When I got to the counter, I was told my portion of the cost would be $800 for six pills. I was beside myself. After some research, I found that this pill is expensive no matter what. Luckily, I was able to find a manufacturer's coupon online for $300 off, so I paid $506 for these six pills. That plus the $686.66 emergency room bill equals $1,186.72 that I'm now responsible for from this one illness. The timing of me being in close proximity to feral cat feces due to having to trap the animals myself and bring them in myself, and then contracting a parasite that is commonly found in feral cat feces cannot be ignored and weighs heavily on my mind. The cost of the care I had to receive this weighs heavily on my finances. Scientific studies show that feral cats are a big disease-spreading problem, and there are recorded cases of feral cats spreading this parasite to humans. To summarize, in May, I saw a cat on the property I rent that began acting aggressively. At that aggression, I wanted the cat removed for fear of my safety and the safety of guests. I looked online for help, and I found that I had to go through the Humane Society. I called them and was told that I had to come and get traps, trap the animal, then bring the animal in myself. I notified my landlady of this to see if I could get help. She left it for me to do. I called the Humane Society to confirm the policy. I even stopped in once to pick up a trap, but they had none available at the time. Then I saw the cat had six kittens, and they were using my patio as a place to play and to take turns eating other animals. I called the Humane Society again with this new development and was told again that I had to trap the cats and bring them in myself. I brought some live animal traps from my parents and from an acquaintance of theirs. I successfully trapped three kittens, brought them to the Humane Society, then with another trap from the Humane Society. I tried to trap the remaining cats in the same area, but have not seen them since. About a week after coming to close contact with the cats and their feces, as well as spending a lot of time in the location where I trapped them, I became sick with something that you can catch from animal feces. I recovered, but not before piling up over $1,000 in medical bills. I have been a ball of anxiety ever since, worrying that I'll be reinfected and worrying about going out on my patio again. An even shorter summary, with an aggressive stray cat at my home, I tried to get help with it, but found I was on my own, with the exception of being able to borrow someone else's traps. Then it multiplied, and I trapped some of the cats and came into close contact with them and their feces. Then I got sick with something that can be found in feral cat feces, which, in addition to being miserable, costs me over $1,000 to treat and makes me anxious about living where I live. I was told a few times that the Humane Society doesn't have the resources to go out and do the trapping. Why aren't those resources available to them? Why are Oshkosh residents being made to count on an entity that does not have the resources to come help them? Oshkosh residents themselves may end up struggling for resources to pay for medical costs that they might incur based on close contact with feral animals as a result of having to trap them on their own. After my trapping and second statement, the Humane Society representative had mentioned groups of volunteers who might be able to help with the whole trapping process for a fee. If so, let's get them involved, make the citizens of Oshkosh aware of their existence with information on the city's website and the Humane Society's website, and let's not keep putting Oshkosh residents in danger with this terrible policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else registered for citizens' comments?
No one else has signed up.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that detailed experience. I'm sorry that happened to you. City manager, will we be able to do any further follow-up on the?
I'll talk to Chief Smith about the information that he shared this evening and see if there's any additional services that the Humane Society is aware of.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to consent agenda items. Do we have anyone registered to speak on consent agenda items?
No one is registered.
All right, thank you. Need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Mugrower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Robbie, if you wouldn't mind coming up, and I apologize, I didn't give you a heads-up that I was going to ask a question. Usually I try to. But in regards to 19446 and 19447, the same question applies to both. We're going to award nearly $2 million in improvements to the community, 1.7 to the wastewater treatment plant, and 200,000 to some road work. And both of them were single bids. We didn't receive multiple bids. So while we went through the competitive bidding process and it was open and transparent, any concerns that, we only had one bidder for each of those projects, and just wondering what your thoughts are on that? I know it's just, it's concerning that we're, that we need to make sure we're spending the taxpayer dollars well and appropriately, and we're only getting one bidder for these projects.
Anytime we have only a single bidder on a project, we certainly do go back and take a look to make sure that the bid is in the realm of where we would expect it to be. Not that, you know, perhaps this one person may have known, everybody else was so busy they weren't going to bid, and they inflate it. And in this case, both of these bids were right in line with where the design engineers estimated the cost of construction would be at. In the case of both of these contractors, they're both contractors that we've worked with in the past, and we've had an excellent track record with both of these contractors as well. So I am, I am not overly concerned with the fact that we did only get one. Would I like to get more? Absolutely, I would love to get more than one bid on projects. Unfortunately, with the way the economy is right now, many contractors are booked for the rest of this year and into next year already. So it does pose us some challenges sometimes. But in both of these cases, the bid prices were in line with where we anticipated them to be before bidding.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Robbie.
You're welcome.
Any other items on consent agenda council wishes to discuss? I do have one, 19459. Mr. Davis, just a question regarding 19459. B, approve amendment to 2019 apparitions budget. A is on the Pollock Pool concessions, but B is on contract services for inspections, and we actually are ahead on that, correct? This isn't an asking for additional amount, right?
Well, technically, we are asking for additional money, but that's because we have additional revenue coming in because the city offers a commercial plan review through the city rather than going through the state. And that's basically, we charge what the state does for the same review, but we do it much quicker, and a lot of contractors take us up on that offer. So either staff does that, or we have a contract architect, engineering firm that helps us with the reviews. In this particular case, the dollars that we're getting in pays the architect engineer for those services, and then it's basically money in, money out. The applicant pays for it, we pay the contractor, so it's neutral to the city, and we have had a lot of construction. So we've gone through that budget that we have for the architect and engineer, and we expect we need more plan reviews done for the balance of the year, and we'll get that revenue from the applicants who like the service.
So they like the service because it expedites their projects, correct?
Absolutely. We shoot for a five-day turnaround for those plan reviews, and the state is usually one to two months out.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we will now take the roll on the consent agenda.
Herman?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
No items have been removed from consent agenda, so we will move on to pending ordinances. 19463, approve amendment to Chapter 19, Section 19-4, T of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code defining Bowen Street Fishing Dock Park. Do we have anyone registered?
No one is registered.
All right, bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll.
Herman?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
19464, designate bike lanes and restrict parking on portions of Northwest Field and North Kohler Streets. Do we have anyone registered for that?
No one is registered.
All right, bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Will you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
And our last pending ordinance is 19465, approve temporary closure of Harrison Street from Nicolay Avenue to East Packard Avenue. Is there anyone registered for this one?
No one is registered.
All right. Council, motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I just have a question, perhaps then, Mr. Robbie, if you would just share with the public why we're closing that section and for how long?
This is actually a request from the contractor that is working for Oshkosh Corporation to replace a water service going into their building. So access will be maintained to their building from each direction, so the closure will literally be about a 20-foot-wide swath of Harrison Street so that they can replace their water service to that building, so they'll have full access to their building. But I believe the duration was only a couple of weeks. I don't remember off the top of my head what it was, but...
So this is just lane restriction, it's not total closure?
It'll be closed to through traffic, but access will be maintained to all properties. It's just you may have to come in from one side or the other to get there.
Okay.
In our minutes, it says one week.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't remember off the top of my head what it was, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next we have new ordinances. No formal action will be taken.
No.
Excuse me, sorry. Let's vote on 19465. Please call the roll.
Herman?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
So the following new ordinances, we'll take no formal action on this. First off is 19466, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district SMU to duplex residential six, District DR6, for property located at South 2400 block of Amroad Road. Plan commission recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered for 466?
No one is registered.
All right. No action. And 19467, approve zone change from urban industrial district UI to urban industrial district with a planned development overlay, UIPD, attend 16 Witsel Avenue. Again, plan commission recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered?
No one is registered.
All right. And 19468, approve appointment of alternates to city boards and commissions. Anyone registered to speak?
No one's registered.
No action on that item either. Moving on to new resolutions. 19469, approve development agreement with Merge LLC for redevelopment of parcels H, I, and J within the Marion Road redevelopment area. Do we have anyone registered?
No one is registered.
All right. Bring that back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
And discussion. Mr. Davis, would you like to speak to or add anything to this development agreement?
Maybe I could just recap things for viewers at home.
Summary?
Yes. This is the three parcels we have remaining on Marion Road. There's the parcel by the river, there's the parcel by the water tower, and the parcel that's at the corner of Pearl and Jackson. The development group approached the city several months ago. They've gone through quite the process to identify what projects they'd like to build. We've gone through both the site planning process and a tax increment finance plan. This development agreement implements part of that TIF plan, which is a Pago TIF for the developers. This would be a mixed-use development that would pay up to 25% of the project costs that they can document as part of the redevelopment costs for all three parcels. And let's see, the other highlights I would be looking at is that there is a look-back clause for this after the 10 years. We are, we are planning on keeping this open long enough to pay the developer, as well as if there's any potential public projects, especially the Oregon Street Bridge, in case there's any improvements that we need to make to that property. And then lastly, the developers are taking care of the existing environmental conditions and including the appropriate liability protections for the city.
And how many total units, again?
240 residential units.
240 new residential units coming downtown.
Yes.
Excellent. Councilmember Peschall?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On page four of the development agreement, at the very bottom, there's a section noted D called Submission of Rental Information.
Yes.
So as a person who works in the housing industry, I find the collection of that information very interesting. But I was surprised to see it in the developers' agreement, partially because I hadn't seen it before in previous years, so I'm wondering if this is a new addition.
Yes, it is.
And so, and I think that's, I think that's a good, I think that's good information to be requesting on an annual basis. So for those out in the public, what I'm referring to is that merge development needs to submit on an annual basis the amount of rent that's collected with this project. And I just find that to be really good information. It allows us to be able to see on average what type of rent is being collected with a public, with an entity that's being provided a public benefit. So I think that's really important information, so thank you for having that in there. The one other thing too is it also bails to tell us not just rent, but also how often units are leased up and how often there's vacancies and how long that lasts. So that's a good collection of information there. So I'm used to that type of information, actually.
All right. So can we please call the roll on nineteen four sixty-nine? Herman?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven. New resolution nineteen dash four seven zero, approve development agreements with Rogan Stores, Oshkosh LLC, Riley Real Estate LLC, and Masters Oshkosh LLC for redevelopment of the Aviation Plaza. Do we have anyone registered?
No one is registered.
All right, back to council for motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Mr. Davis, another quick recap on this one?
Absolutely. This is the Aviation Plaza property that, if you recall, we've gone through quite an elaborate review of both the site plan through plan commission and council as well as a TIF plan. They both come to fruition with the development agreement, serving as the implementation device for the TIF plan. Again, this would be a Pago TIF. In this particular case, it'll be a shorter duration. We're looking at something around ten years, based on the projections we have today. Depends on how their assessed value is and how the mill rate is calculated in the future. But that's what we think it's going to be, somewhere around ten years at this point. With the three different developers, there's a lot of public improvements that have to be made to make, bring that property into compliance. So we're identifying eligible project costs for stormwater, sewer and water, and site preparation costs. We've also tied this to a WEDC grant app that WDC gave the city that we are also putting towards this project. So that'll help all three properties get the infrastructure upgraded. Extreme Customs is one of the participants, the Riley. They're looking to relocate and add additional jobs and invest about five million dollars into that property. Mineshaft is the entertainment dining experience, and they're looking at investing about fifteen million dollars into the property, which they hope to start this fall and open next spring. We've tied these all together, and the city has worked diligently to make sure that we can keep this together as one cohesive project, even though we have three development agreements, so that we've identified what the responsibilities of all those developers are to keep this entire package together rather than split off.
That's some serious multitasking.
That is a lot of credit to the city attorney and her staff to get that figured out.
Thank you. All right, can we please call the roll on nineteen four seventy? Herman?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven. Next is council discussion and direction to city manager of future agenda items. The first one is future agenda items. Second budget workshop is scheduled for August twenty-first at 5:00 PM here in 404. And that is open to the public for viewing purposes, if you'd like to attend. So is everybody good with that date?
Did we move that from noon to five? I added on my calendar noon.
There's no...
Typically, yeah, five. Second is the Oshkosh Area School District and Common Council Joint Meeting. And from what I understand, that has been rescheduled or delayed.
Yeah, there's a conflict with the school board, so we're looking at an alternative date. So we'll be back to you on that.
And then councilmember Allison Osby has an item here for web contact form discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just something that I wanted to ask the council and how possible, I guess, it would be. A question directed to staff is often we get communications from our constituents that are in the web contact form. Couple of things, there's been times that we've received emails and there's not been a actual contact. And so I think there should be required fields that are needed. Also too, because we all have different schedules, some of us are retired, some of us work, some of us work different shifts as well. I would also like to have it mandatory where it's not only an email, but also a phone number. Because depending on date time and where we're at, both pieces of information, I think, would be helpful for us to properly respond in adequate time to the constituent. So those are the three things I'm asking.
I certainly would agree with that. It's very difficult to respond to something and have to try and go search out someone's contact information if they don't provide it. So you're asking the staff add a required fields in order to submit the form?
Required fields, name, phone number, and email, those three items.
Councilmember Peschall?
Sure. I'm in support of that because I believe it makes it easier for us to contact with them. So I'd like to add one element to that. In my short time back on the council, I've had a couple of different constituents that have relayed to me that they don't get like a copy of that web form that they send to us. And so that, and so they don't have a record. It's a public record, but they don't have a record of it that gets sent back to them. And so if there's a way that if we're going to start capturing emails, that we then return what they sent to us back to them as well?
So like an acknowledgement?
So they get an acknowledgement. It's like, you know, it's what we would get in our outbox if we sent that out. It would be there, but in their case, they don't get that right now.
Well, the other thing too is when it was first established, I was just used to hitting reply.
Sure.
So I'd send a note, and then somebody'd say, "You didn't contact me." And I'd be like, "Yes, I did."
Yeah, because it went back to the web?
It went back to the web instead of clicking like on the email, so sorry for those when it happened. Mr. Miller just also had a suggestion of maybe perhaps even adding the address of someone.
Oh, certainly.
That's a possibility.
Mr. Robb, are we able to give that direction to...
I'm going to ask Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Well, we certainly are happy to do whatever the council wishes. Just a few things that I'd like to mention, they may not have considered as part of the process. One of the things we considered when we set the web form up is there are some people that don't have an email address. And for example, they may access and try to communicate to the council, maybe at a public library, some other area. So requiring that then would put those individuals at a disadvantage. They wouldn't have the ability to communicate with council if they didn't have an email address and you made it a requirement. So that's one of the reasons why we don't list it.
Councilmember Peschall?
I'm willing to wait for...
Okay, councilmember Miller?
Fitz, can we put two fields in there where it says email address? Or if they don't have one, they can check not available, and then we...
I think I'm certainly happy to talk to Tony about what options we have. I understand the council's point because you want to be able to communicate with them. So the way it was structured was really with the citizens in mind, so we wouldn't exclude anyone. So they could all speak to you and share their thoughts. But I'm happy to talk to Tony about all the variables that you'd like, and then we can communicate that to, back to you, what options you might have, and then you can select whatever you wish. But that is one of the examples of one of the problems with requiring multiple fields to be filled. Hope that makes sense.
Councilmember Peschall?
Sure, so maybe it's not that we require them to give a certain field, but they maybe are required to provide at least one way to contact them of their choice.
So you're suggesting at least one way, telephone, address, email?
Like they have the ability to choose.
Whatever they prefer, but they're required to have one, is what I hear you saying.
I think that's, to me, that...
So I like the thought, but that's some of the challenge is that if you only have a phone number, sometimes you call and all you get is voicemail. Or they don't answer, or you're playing phone tag for days. So then I would say, maybe that's where the address comes in. Because at least you could acknowledge with a note that you did try to call. So, you know, maybe it's good to have three things, and because they should have a phone number or an email and should have some type of address, I would think.
So what I hear you saying is...
It just would be nice to have multiple ways to reach them.
So you're saying require two or just require one of those three?
But that's what I'm saying, Mr. Fitzpatrick, is if it's just a phone number, you can't always get a hold of them. Or they may not be able to get a hold of you, especially if you're in meetings. Multiple meetings have multiple things going on. For some of us, we lead very, very busy lives. But they still should be acknowledged, or, but sometimes it's not possible, or they don't include anything at all.
Okay.
I think what I'd ask staff to do is take a look at what different options. I think this discussion gives us a good...
But I understand what Mr. Peschall is saying.
Yeah, if you could provide us the opportunity to just come up with some different options that we can present to you, and I think we'll be able to try to capture what you're trying to accomplish. And then you can select whatever you think is going to be best. How's that sound?
Sure.
Good, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peschall?
So first, thank you for doing that. And I want to acknowledge that this option exists for people to communicate to us. And I don't know about all the rest of the council members, but I find it very exhilarating to get emails directly from people that I know that are going to our website and potentially looking at information, or let alone just wanting to contact myself or other council members. And I think it's really important that that feature is there and that people understand that that feature is there and that it can be used. So it's forward-thinking about having that feature there, just alone.
And I will say that that's kind of a great point too, because our residents, our business owners, you know, need to understand that that is the appropriate formal communication with council, either through mail, US mail, or email. I have seen a number of times where our names have been mentioned in some kind of social media thread, and we may or may not have known about that. And there are seeming to be requests being made, and we don't have the resources or the time to monitor every single social media. So just, that is the appropriate way to contact us if you want a response. And to councilmember Allison Osby's point, it would be helpful to have a way to connect with you, to give you that response. All right, next we have possible term limits for boards, commissions, and council members. My name is on this. It was a subject that we covered in a workshop recently about boards and commissions, and the topic came up in relation to not only boards and commissions, but council members. So this is the opportunity for council to discuss that further and give direction to staff as to how we'd like to proceed. Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I think until the state of Wisconsin changes their term limit laws, federal government changes their term limit laws, why do we need term limits? The citizens will make their decision to whether we should remain on council if we're running for council. If we're not doing the job that they want us, there's other people that can run for council and get elected. Boards and commissions, same thing. I don't think, if we put term limits on them, then we should have term limits on ourselves. And I just don't think we need to have term limits on our boards and commissions. If there's a problem with a board or commission member, the chair has contact with you or any other council member or with staff and say that, you know, they're having a problem with it. A member of a board or commission, whether it's not attending meetings, or derogatory during meetings, or negative in the meetings or something like that, I think can be addressed to your position and that. So I don't, at this point, feel there's a need for any type of term limits at this point.
On either?
On any of them.
Okay. Anyone else? Comments? Councilmember Muggerauer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, after we met in that meeting, I think my thoughts have changed a little bit. And I have to echo councilmember Herman's statements. I still don't believe that councilmembers should have term limits. We already have those imposed. They're called elections, and the people will choose who they see fit to represent them. But for the boards and commissions, you know, originally during our conversation, I was somewhat supportive of that and got the thinking that by imposing term limits, what we're really doing is we're telling people that we no longer want their service. If they're willing to keep going, and we impose a term limit and require them to take some time off, that it's potential that we're turning them off to the service to this community. And I just, I can't support that. So I don't know that I'd be very supportive of term limits for boards and commission members.
I believe it was brought up as a discussion point for the purpose of potentially making room for new applicants to have an opportunity. But since that time, we've also implemented or added the ability to, for boards and commissions that don't already have them, to add two alternates. So that does give another, two opportunities to serve. So it doesn't sound like we have anything further on this. Anyone else? All right, so no direction at this time on either item. Next is provide direction to staff on creation of an ad hoc committee to investigate alternatives to special assessments. Looks like we received in our packet memo from the city manager that provides some framework for us to give direction on with some suggestions. Councilmember Muggerauer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be the first one, I guess, on this one. Yeah, I don't mind the framework that the city manager Roloff proposed to us, or at least maybe just suggested to us that we use. It does make sure we're trying to take into account the multiple different segments of this community, whether it's residential, business, nonprofit, as well as institutional. So it does hit on all the high notes. So I don't have an issue with the makeup of that. I think as with anything, it will always come down to the people that are sought out or are appointed to it and the level of effort that is given to put into the work product. So I'm okay with that type of framework if the rest of the council is.
The only thing I see missing that I think we also had discussion about, and that was, unless I'm missing it here, potential for having one or two council members also on that.
There isn't enough for one council member under residential.
Yeah, I put it under residential, but again, these are just suggestions for you.
Well, yeah, typically if we're a council member, we're probably a resident, so... Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree with councilmember Muggerauer. I think it's good. My only concern is we don't want to get it too big. And who's making the recommendations? Is it going to be councilmembers notifying Mr. Roloff's office, you know, through his secretary? Or how are we going to start to get to this group and invite them to be on board? I know I forwarded a name to the mayor, that gentleman I approached fits three of these categories. He's a business owner, he's an apartment owner, and he's part of the bid board. So he's very engaged in different things in the community. So I think that's important. I think, you know, long-range finance, obviously, they were part of that initial discussion with transportation. But at the same time though, you know, how long, do we want to give them specific tasks? I think that's something we got to decide. And how long do we want them to meet so that we don't drag this out? Because I got to believe there's a timeline to when, if we do anything, that could be retroactive to 2019. So I would think that they can't be meeting for six, seven, eight months. But yet, at the same time, they need to be able to come to fairly quick, concise of, you know, do we stay with what we're doing now for street assessments? Do we go to some type of a, you know, monthly fee? Or just what do we do? But I got to believe that we have to make a decision sometime in this budget cycle coming up that we'll have to make that decision, and we can't do it for nineteen. It can only go forward from twenty forward or twenty-one forward, depending on just where we come up with and what we come up with. But I think that I, for one, would like to see us get away from the assessment program. I think it does put an unfair burden on some of the homeowners. But we've always had assessments in the city of Oshkosh. And we're only looking, again, at concrete and sidewalks. So that's the two areas. So that's the two areas that narrows the focus down a little bit and how we're going to pay for those two items. And if we're still going to have the citizens assess for stormwater, sanitary sewer and water laterals, they need to be made aware of that. Cause I don't think that came out real clear in the conversation. I think a lot of citizens thought they were paying $4.50 a month and that's all they were going to be paying if their street was redone. And I don't think that got, that message got out there clearly enough.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I did have a chance to talk to Mr. Wyman, uh, head of the community foundation here. And I, I know he's working with, uh, some business leaders and some other community leaders and, and trying to put together some type of committee as well. Uh, we talked briefly about it, um, to, to address this issue specifically too. So I'd, I'd like to give them a little time to see what they're proposing as far as a, a, a group of individuals and things like that and be part of this process.
Councilmember McCrossey.
I'm all for the, the group coming together and bringing us a proposal. But my only fear is if we don't give them firm deadlines, some of the people on the committee's agenda may be to drag feet and never come to a resolution. So I would think we need to have firm timelines for all this to have them bring a plan forward. If that's what their objective is.
And I, I think I would, I would like to also see, um, some kind of time limit on this as well as, um, see, we don't necessarily need to have a formal application, but at least a, a letter of interest, um, submitted in a certain time by which that needs to be in, in order to convene the, the committee. Uh, similar to how we do with the other boards and commissions, although this is ad hoc, it still is a specific task that we're asking them to pursue. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. Um, thank you for sharing, Mr. Miller, that there's another committee. I just was wondering if staff was aware that there was another committee forming?
I was not aware of that. I, I'm only familiar with the letter that the chamber had sent, uh, immediately after council's action.
Okay, so nothing beyond that?
No, nothing beyond that.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Allison Osby, did you say there is another committee forming?
Well, Mr. Miller just mentioned that, um, he said that there were some businesses and, um, the foundation that were meeting regarding this issue for a proposal. I just didn't know if staff was aware.
Certainly, I don't know where other council members are.
No, in my apologies, I just met with Mr. Wyman this week, so that's all new stuff. So I was going to give them a little time. I just want the council to be aware of it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Then maybe what we should be doing is reaching out to the foundation and finding out what they're doing. That would be appropriate, I would think.
Well, it seems that we do have, uh, a suggestion for participation by, uh, some nonprofit and institutional. I could see them filling a spot out here.
Not knowing, are they, are they actually looking at the problem or are they looking at getting volunteers?
No, no, I, I think, it, I, I think Bill wants to be part of this process. I, I think he sees value there. So I don't know if he's necessarily committing the foundation to this or his personal time, so.
Well, I, I think we should at least reach out to the foundation and just make sure that, you know, what are they? What are they, you know, does he want to be part of this committee? Or is the foundation leading a group of business owners slash citizens maybe to talk about this issue? Because it is an important issue, obviously. So I think we need to reach out to the foundation.
Yeah, I, I made a note to follow up with Mr. Wyman. I think that's appropriate.
Councilmember Miller.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Oh, I was just, um, gonna concur with, uh, Ms. Paul Mary or Mayor Paul Mary that, um, I do think, um, in order to streamline this, I think it would be a good process to have, um, you know, something filled out for people that are, you know, possibly wanting to participate.
One of the council members had mentioned something about tasks and a charge for the committee. So is there anything in particular that?
Well, I think, uh, again, the, the decision that we were voting on, the transportation fee was geared to two items. Just concrete of the street and our sidewalk program, whether it's new sidewalk or rehab. Those are the only two things that that transportation fee was going to pay for. So if that's what we want to continue, then that's, that's the charge that, that group's, what, what are the options? That, if we don't want assessments any longer, what are the options to pay for concrete streets in our sidewalk program?
In replacing the special assessments?
In, in replacing the special assessments.
Councilmember Mukerhour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, no, I agree that there needs to be a set timeline as well as a specific purpose. Those are, those are clear and I think that's, uh, an easy ask. Looking at the, um, you know, how long it took long range finance, um, as well as, um, you know, all the staff time, a lot of the work has been done already. This, uh, as I mentioned, um, last meeting, I think it was, there was a lot of good work product that was done by city staff. Council, um, city manager rolloff, finance team, public works, a lot of good, uh, work product was put, uh, created. And whatever group is going to look at this does not need to reinvent the wheel. The data is there to analyze and to, uh, review themselves. And then it's just a matter of what type of proposal, um, do they support really? So all the work, the, the difficult work has been done already. Now it's just coming together and trying to find a way forward, a path forward. So a 90 day window seems appropriate to me for a group to get together four or five times over a 90 day window. Roughly seems appropriate to me as well as a specific purpose of identify a proposal to eliminate special assessments for concrete. Period. Find a proposal that, that would work within that group, that that group can put together and bring forward to us to present saying, here's, here's what we think is best, here's how we get there, what do you think? Not multiple options, um, you know, I don't need a flow chart, we've seen enough. That would be a very specific purpose. Find me, find me an alternative to, than to what was just, um, not passed.
All right, so if we're going to, um, put in 90 days, I'm just looking at the calendar here. That sounds like a reasonable amount of time. If that, if we are to give until, uh, let's see, the 23rd. So our next council meeting would be September 10th. Say September 6th is a deadline for submitting letters of interest or an application to be part of this. Um, and I'll just read out some recommendations here that were made. Uh, we need to decide whether or not we're, uh, gonna go with this framework for the participation. So we have government, nonprofit, institutional, two reps from either educational, state government, churches, other nonprofit. That's one grouping. Another grouping is business, four reps, one local retail, one large commercial, one real estate slash commercial rental and one industrial. And the next grouping is residential, four reps, one from multifamily, one from single family, a council member and one from long range finance. And then potentially two city staff, city manager and director of public works included. So are we okay with that makeup of this group? Hi, I'm Madam Mayor.
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
No problem.
Okay, so that answers number one. Is that a reasonable amount of time between today, August 13th and September 6th? Is that enough time, city manager?
I, I think it'll be.
To pull the applications or letters of interest?
You would have to create the committee at the next meeting.
Right.
Appoint the members at the, uh, September.
10th.
10th meeting. Having a deadline of the 6th, I think would be a little tough because let's say you had 20 applications for 12 positions. How are you going to narrow that down?
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just being honest with you.
Okay, so what if we move it back to, uh, two weeks from now? Like the 27th of August? For a deadline? To give that two week window for review?
You want to approve them on the 10th is what I'm hearing you say.
We want to approve them on the 10th and give them 90 days.
Yeah. You know, we could have the council approve the ad hoc committee at the 27th meeting.
Okay.
I, I could just take a little chance and say, pretty good idea if you're going to form the committee. We could start the recruitment now without.
Where, where would you like the letters of interest if that's what we're asking for?
I think just like, just, yeah, just like we do with for boards and commissions.
Is there an opportunity to create a?
But then everybody would get copies of the applications or the letters of interest. Do we want a formal application or a letter of interest?
I think for an ad hoc, a letter of interest is all you really need.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Is that okay with you?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think these are, you have to be.
Or would it be easier for them to be directed to the board commission website? And, but we don't have a spot that says ad hoc on there, right? We list all the different committees.
But they could fill in ad hoc in the application if they wanted to do an application.
I mean, I don't know if that would be easier for, for people that are interested to just go to the website.
What we'll work on is give you the opportunity to have the applications in by August 30th. That would give you all the following week to take a look at the applications so that on the 10th of September, you could pick the people.
So are we okay with using the online application or hard copy as it is? And it just says ad hoc for that limited purpose?
If you let us figure that out for you, I, I got a good idea of what you want. We'll, we'll make it work.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Okay, I think I'm, the question may have already been answered, but I was just gonna ask if staff wanted us to have like a noon special meeting next week, if we could have a quorum, if that helped the process move along any quicker for them.
The next question the mayor's going to ask is probably going to depend on that because it's the tasks and the charge of the committee. You went through the committee membership pretty easily. Thanks for liking it. I, it wasn't necessarily the idea, but it's really more what you want this committee to do. Councilmember Mukerhour talked about, there's some, there's a lot of legwork that's already been done. Do we build on that? It's really more about, is there any specific thing you want to say? Committee of 12, we want you to do A, B and C. I think that's probably the most important thing. So I, I really need that direction now because that is kind of up in the air. I, I was great input, but I gotta have it more formal.
Councilmember McCrossey.
I was gonna suggest a special meeting or something to get this rolling too. I was gonna suggest we have our workshops next week if we could do it at the same time or after or before. I don't know what everybody's schedule is, but I wouldn't be able to make it 12 o'clock.
I'm just out of town that day, but I could certainly give feedback to, um, city manager rolloff or to, you know, another colleague on council.
So you're out on the 21st when we're doing the budget workshop?
Yeah, that's when I'm at a conference, a three day conference.
Okay.
Well, I think Mr. Mukerhour pretty much narrowed it down. We want to know where we're going with, I guess, concrete, right? Concrete for streets and concrete for sidewalks, I guess.
In 90 days.
In 90 days. In lieu of assessments, what is the best option?
And the group will be tasked with something that's palatable for all.
Right. Right. And I, and I guess, just going back to the, uh, application side, do we want to give them the option? If they don't want to go online and do it, they can send a letter of interest.
They can always, yeah, we.
Yeah, I just, just so that people.
Yeah, we allow.
Yeah. So people are aware that if they don't want to go online, they can still send a letter of interest, uh, serving on this committee.
Okay. The, the fee that was proposed actually covered four areas. And I'm just gonna, I didn't want it to, to miss out on that. It was concrete streets, curb and gutter, sidewalks and asphalt pavement. So that, that asphalt pavement, those are the ones that everybody gets special assessed for. So even though I know you were talking more generally, I wanted to be very specific about what those, what those areas were. Is it still the intent of council, your ideas? You want to eliminate those special assessments across the board? And that would be a charge of the committee. How do you do those four? You can, you know, you can look at what we've already done to date and evaluate those. Or are there other alternatives you want to pursue?
I don't want to limit it to what we had before because that would kind of defeat the purpose of coming up with a different version. I'm open to not necessarily including all four of those elements.
I just wanted to make sure that, that was being eliminated tonight, that those four are still in play and that committee could come back and say, only asphalt or, you know, or, you know, only sidewalks. I mean, that would be up to the committee, but it was really more about not ruling them out tonight or when you adopt the resolution. That, that was my thinking.
So our dates are?
So we'll put it on as an extra agenda item for next Wednesday's workshop. Take action on it, then the committee will be formally created, then we can immediately start recruitment. Deadline of the 30th of August gives you a whole week to evaluate positions. You approve them on September 10th. Not to be a killjoy with your 90 days. I'm just, just tried to be honest. I'm looking at the calendar. Coincidentally, three months from that September 10th date is Tuesday, December 10th, which is your regular council meeting, but it is also your last council meeting of the year normally. I don't think you want to meet on Christmas Eve, just a guess. So it'll be a tight timeline. The committee will really need to get their recommendations to you.
And so I guess I would just want to make sure that, you know, we make it clear that if you are applying to be on that ad hoc committee or expressing a letter of interest, that you are also able to commit to however many meetings that takes in that timeframe.
That's, be realistic. If you're gonna give them that timeframe, I, I agree. Okay.
Councilmember Peschall.
Sure, so I, I think what I'm, what I'm hearing and understanding is that the task force is specifically looking at providing special assessment relief for 2019 and further. But really trying to make it happen in 2019, so.
I, I don't know how it's possible that you can provide special assessment relief in 2019.
Okay.
And I'm saying that with the gentleman from Basil Street in the room. We are already, um, behind the eight ball as far as I'm concerned. I think we have to look forward to 2020. I'm just giving you my.
And that's because of where we're at in the budget cycle right now.
Yeah, we don't, we wouldn't have the funds. We're gonna have to borrow and special assess for, for the projects for this year. It's an unfortunate reality, but it is a reality.
Councilmember Mukerhour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just to that point, um, I can defer, keep going if you want. I was just gonna, I was gonna talk to that one point, that's it, but feel free.
No, go ahead, Mr. Mukerhour, go ahead.
No, I, I think, uh, to expect something to get implemented in 2019 and be effective 2019 is unrealistic. And looking at the budgetary implications of it, it would be irresponsible to suggest it. There's just no way we can fund special assessments for 2019 at the current time. If, if we did something like that, so it'd be irresponsible.
So just, just being, just wanting to be clear as we're, as we're talking about this, because when we say a 90 day window, sometimes that raises people's hopes up that we're going to be able to somehow do this in 90 days and there's going to be that level of relief. And so, um, because I, even though there was so much work and not even terrible work that was put into this, I still think that even a night, coming back with a proposal to somehow do what you did and what the long range finance did, has done for the several years, um, I don't know how realistic that is. You know, so just being honest out there, I mean, it, it took us a couple of years to get to this point of, of this, of these conversations. So, um, so I honestly think that a 90 day, uh, timeline is actually a killer of this. Um, and having that level of flexibility of being able to talk and relay this out without there being a very strict deadline of, of communicating out what our next steps are, I think sometimes can be a way to dismiss the whole process, so.
That's one way of looking at it. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I agree with Bob quite a bit here, but the, the bigger issue is we want this to be a complete package that, that the council can vote yes on. I mean, I don't, I don't think we want to force this thing in 90 days and come up with another package that, that doesn't pass. I, I, I think that's our goal here is, is to create something that we can all buy into. So, uh, I, I concur with Bob, so.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
And Mr. Miller and Mr. Peschall, I, I, I completely understand where you're coming from. But I think, like, we could see this year, I mean, we did send out notices, um, of what special assessments were. If, if it was a guarantee that there was going to be no special. I mean, we did send out notices of what special assessments were. If, if it was a guarantee that there was gonna be no special assessments, we would have never sent out the preliminary potential invoices. And so I guess my concern is this could potentially drag out and drag out and drag out as we discussed before. And so I think in order to be fair to the, to the citizens is that we do come to some resolution, whether we move forward with something or whether it's going nowhere at all. So that going into the January 1st of 2020, every single large business, small business, and person that lives in this community knows and is not confused about whether or not they have a special assessment to pay for, and I think that's important. We gotta try to be and keep this rolling and be as transparent so that nobody is surprised or they can plan or whatever. So really, we should know that if not by the time we approve our budget for 2020, like Mr. Roloff asked the last meeting of the year.
Councilmember Mugrauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couldn't have said it better myself, Councilmember Osby, Allison Osby, completely agree with all of that. I think the one thing I'd like to add is deadlines spur action. And by leaving it vague and having a open-ended window, it can just drag on unintentionally. And so at least by giving it a definitive end date or a definitive date to report back to council, here's what we, you know, what they've been able to put together. It could just continue to go on and on, and that's unfortunate, and I wouldn't wanna see that. So deadlines do spur action.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my one question would be, when do we start sending out 2020 notices to the property owners? Because maybe that deadline then is, when do they go out roughly? I mean, you know, so I agree. I don't wanna drag this on either and all too. So when do we, Mr. Robby, traditionally start notifying citizens of?
People that are on next year's street reconstruction program and in the CIP are going to start getting letters from us within the next few weeks. We have our public neighborhood meeting scheduled for the second week in October. So within the next two or three weeks, I will be sending those letters out notifying residents of, here is the neighborhood meeting for the capital improvement program. Then initial readings for the two street reconstruction projects will be at your, probably your first or second meeting in January. Public hearing, public hearing for special assessments for the first project being bid out will probably be at your first meeting in February with a public hearing on the second street reconstruction project probably at your first meeting in March. So people will start getting notified of the projects here within the next couple of weeks. Estimates would be started going out in January and February.
I just, thank you, appreciate that. I guess then, you know, looking at that, I, I think if we wanted to extend it a little bit, it might be the first council meeting then in January, but we're still gonna have to notify citizens that, you know, there's possibility. And I know there's a lot of confusion of that this year because of that, but I agree. We, we, we want somewhat of a timeline, but we don't wanna make it crunching and make it look like they can't. And just throw their hands up and say, well, we can't do it in 90 days. And so maybe the first council meeting in January would, would be on the agenda or something.
Councilmember Peschall.
Sure. I think we're all actually agreeing with each other a little bit here. We're just using, saying it, communicating in different ways. So I, I actually agree that we should provide some level of report within a certain timeframe. If we wanna agree that that's 90 days, let's, let's go ahead and do that. My, my comment is I don't know that we can successfully communicate or create a new plan within 90 days. If we do, that's great, but my feeling is that providing a report within 90 days, the first meeting in January, I think that's a, I think that's a doable thing, but I don't know, again, I don't know, having a solution to that, to that, to that is feasible within that timeframe.
Well, it looks like we have five members of the council so far that wish to give this a specific time limit. And I respectfully appreciate the input Councilmember Miller and Councilmember Peschall gave in terms of not wanting to put those time limits on. But given that there has been a significant amount of work done on, and homework and background, that will save this group some, you know, some time that staff and council have worked on for the past year. So Councilmember Crowsey.
I'm in support of a 90-day limit on this because I think a lot of people that are volunteering for these committees, which is, it's a volunteering to give up their, their time away from whatever they're wanting to do. A lot of times people don't wanna volunteer for something for six, eight months where a 90-day window might be more advantageous to them to get something done, and extending it for an extra two weeks after that, I don't even think that's necessary because, I mean, the people that are coming together are problem solvers, they're city leaders, they're community leaders. I think they're all problem solvers. They can come up with something in 90 days. As Mr. Mugrauer said, the hard work's been done already. They just gotta come up with a new idea that'll make a yes happen here.
I, I do have one clarifying question before we get to Councilmember Miller, and the question is, what we did not specify in here is whether or not we will require residency in the city of these participants.
I think that has to be manned.
We require that for our other. That would only make sense.
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Miller, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have a problem with the deadline. I don't want everybody to get hung up on sending out these notices. James, we're gonna send out worst-case scenario, right? I mean, so they're, they're gonna get informed that they've got special assessments, and this is the worst-case scenario that's gonna happen. Is that accurate?
I think we would start, you know, with the neighborhood meeting. We would provide that information, but then we would also say, you know, there is a committee looking at, you know, coming up with an alternative to, you know, replace these. And then depending on where the committee and the recommendation is at, by the time we would be looking at sending out notices for the paving jobs will certainly determine what type of notices people get.
I guess, I guess I would prefer not to even mention that, just, you know.
All right. City manager.
The neighborhood meetings in October, they don't talk numbers with individual properties, but they talk what is in the CIP, which is total project cost, city cost, and special assessment cost. So they don't get into numbers with individual property, nor is your correct, but the total, the numbers that you'll be seeing in the CIP is the same numbers that they would be seeing in that October meeting.
We're not getting into that level of detail on.
Okay.
Your property's gonna get assessed X dollars, and yours is gonna be Y. I just wanted to make sure you.
Thank you.
All right.
I guess one thing we still need to resolve, sorry, is are we still staying with the five items that Mr. Roloff talked about? Curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, asphalt pavement program?
I, oh, sorry. Is it okay? Thank you. Forgot to push the button. So I, I think those are all of the opportunities to be solved, but I think that's where the benefit of the committee comes in because maybe they all agree that maybe there's three out of the four or two of the four, or, I, I think that's really what the purpose of the committee is, is that maybe that's how they come together to come up with something that, again, is fair and equitable for all.
And while that committee will be just like others in that it is advisory, giving us a recommendation that still gives us one more opportunity to reshape that to some degree as well. All right. Do you have what you need then, city manager, for this?
I think so. I'm, I'm gonna give a little back because you're gonna be approving this next, next Wednesday. Look at options for special assessment relief, funding options for special assessment relief. And I wrote down implementation options because I think that's, you know, as we're talking different, if we talk about something we haven't talked about before, which I think the mayor said, we have to, if we just are gonna beat our heads against the wall with the same old stuff, we're not gonna get anywhere. So we have to have implementation options. And then the 90-day window thing, I guess what I'd like to suggest is we're already gonna be pretty tight. I'd say ask for the report from the committee no later than December 15th, then you have it for the holidays. And then in January, when James starts sending out notices, we have an idea of where we're going on this thing. That's just my. I'll put it together. You can change it however you want to, but I guess I'd like to do it that way. And then I heard require residency.
Yes.
So.
Well, do we, do we wanna talk about businesses, though? I mean, a lot of guys own businesses who don't live in the community, too, so I mean.
That's up to council.
Councilmember Mugrauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would be just fine with the discussion, just having the discussion now, but I'm just fine with opening it up to non-residents, provided, I guess the basic way to put it is they're invested in this community, whether, I think that's a good way to put it. You know, I don't know off the top of my head, does, you know, senior leadership at UWO, Asher Cherry School District, Fox Valley Tech, do they live in this, do they live in the city limits and who would, that's part of those entities, do they wanna be a part of this or can they? Those types of things. And we're looking for somebody from the educational sector to possibly be a part of it. They're invested in this community in different ways. I respect the residency requirement wholeheartedly, but with this type of a group, I don't know that that, that's a deal breaker for me. I'm okay with it not being a requirement that they have residency here.
I, I have to say, I, I feel like we need to stand firm on residency requirements. I could see allowing like one or two out of the 12, but this is a huge financial decision for this community. And if you, you know, look at it, while I totally respect and appreciate the investments made for that significant of a decision to be made without the majority being residents, I'm a little challenged on that. City manager.
Thank you. The city attorney and I were just talking. There are a couple provisions in our, in our code when, then we do with, for example, the library board, the school representative doesn't necessarily have to be there. The bid is another example where you have property owners. So maybe what you do is say, you know, two of the businesses, two of which must own property in the city. That way you cover a little bit. I think they're, so it's certainly up to council, but that might be kinda using that bid approach. No more than two, but they, if you're not in the city, you must own property in the city, something like that.
Councilmember Crowsey.
I would agree with that. I mean, I just worry about some of the businesses possibly bringing in somebody that doesn't have any personal interest in Oshkosh, just basically to represent them. So if they had residence or owned the business in Oshkosh, I would support somebody outside of the city, but I would just hate to see somebody come in from like Chicago as a rep.
Right. And, you know, even the business stuff, I gotta work through that and figure out what the, you may not get a perfect match with the four I listed. And so I think you'll wanna have yourself some flexibility. This gives you a good idea. And I think we just say, look, these are the types of people we're looking for, but we'd like at least two of them to be residents, and the other two can be outside, but they have to at least own the property. They gotta have skin in the game for what you're talking about.
So they can't be Bears or Vikings fans.
Absolutely not.
Councilmember Peschall.
So are you suggesting that you'll apply a percentage to that, to each one of those? Are you asking us to enumerate how many?
I think what I'll do is I'll suggest, you know, within the government and nonprofit institutional, you may wanna be a little flexible in that category and in the business category. The other ones I don't think you have to worry about because one is called residential, so it's gonna be residence.
So I would propose one who has involvement or ownership of a business or institution in the government, nonprofit, institutional, and then that, that could not necessarily be a resident, and one from the business community.
So 50%?
No, not 50%, that would be 25% of those two, one out of four.
I'll work with it, and you'll either like it or not. So, and I'll be okay with whatever you, whatever you.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
I guess I agree on the, the business side, whether, or even the institutional side, government, I guess, of having someone from outside. For, for example, the gentleman that spoke the night that we voted, he has businesses in the city of Oshkosh, but he wanted to be on that committee because he's got a stake in it. The discussion of musemental products, $132,000 assessment, I think they had. I'm not 100% sure the owner or the president of that company lives in the city of Oshkosh. But they have a big stake because their business got assessed. So I do think we have to have that little bit of flexibility, and I would, and again, council will get the applications. We can make the final decision, too. And if you're not comfortable with someone, then that's not your vote for that person. So I think we can make that decision almost, you know, open it, but, you know, we make that final decision, I guess, is what I look at.
Anybody else? So then we'll see that.
I will work on drafting something, give it to you in your Friday packet. That's a tall order, but.
Okay.
I can't talk much, so I might as well.
Yes.
Your mother type can work on it.
All right. So next we have the second opportunity for citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone registered for the second citizen statements?
No one's registered.
All right, thank you. Any council member announcements or statements? I know we don't have any on the agenda. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just a shout out to Auto Authority. I don't know if anybody's seen the remodel job. I was driving by Whitsel Avenue there the other day. Auto Authority looks just amazing. They did a great job revamping that. I stopped in to tell them that, and they had a little open house in the area and everything, so nice job there at Auto Authority.
All right. Next is city manager announcements and statements.
I'm gonna try to keep them brief tonight. If you have any questions about the Oshkosh corp update or the outstanding issues, happy to do that. The pavement condition report and the environmental review for 2020 CIPs, hopefully, if you have any questions, happy to answer them. And the mayor, I think it's gonna mercifully help me out and talk about Urban Alliance, but we did add something yesterday, and certainly with, with all the discussion about the arena and the status of it. I asked Ms. Lawrence to, on my behalf, give a little summary. Staff put some, some points together to get some clarification on where we are with that. So Lynn, if you could do that, please.
Sure. As councils are aware, they, we've been notified that there were two lawsuits filed related to the construction and financing of the arena. The RDA still owns that property. The arena is in one of our TIF districts, TIF 31, which was created and provides development incentives to the, to a private developer, Fox Valley Pro Basketball. And that was related to some extraordinary site development costs that they had and to repay for some upfront public infrastructure costs that they paid, and the city is reimbursing them for. The city was not involved in the construction of the arena itself, and that was the responsibility of the developer who sought out private financing for that. The RDA still owns the property at this point in time, but neither the city nor the RDA have been named in either one of the lawsuits. We're monitoring the lawsuits at this point. We've been in contact with Bayland, who is, Bayland Buildings, who is one of the plaintiffs in one of the lawsuits, and also with the Wisconsin herd. And we remain very optimistic that this financing issue will be worked out and that we've also actually this evening just seen an additional statement from the Menominee Nation also continuing their support for the arena. So I think there's a very strong support for the continued operation of, of the arena. It's just a matter of getting that financing issue resolved. So we, we are continuing to, to monitor it, stand ready to talk to the attorneys, the receiver, if there is one appointed. I did see there is a hearing scheduled on Monday for the potential appointment of a receiver for that. So we've been in contact with all of those people, I think.
And city attorney Lawrence, would you, just for the public's benefit, just kinda give a brief description of what receivership means?
In this case, it's a person who would step in and would continue to operate the arena and allow that operation to continue during the course of the court action that's been filed.
Councilmember Peschall.
Sure. I think all of us understand when you say that the RDA owns the property, but I think it might be a useful distinction to make for the public in regards to. it might be a useful distinction to make for the public in regards to what that means.
We own the real property, the land underneath, the arena and the improvements are owned by Fox Valley Pro Basketball. That was done just as a means to allow for the completion of some of that environmental remediation on the property, the city need to, needed to stay as owner of the property while that was being done. That's been completed now, we had some issues working through the final closure, we actually have received a closure letter, we have not received the certificate of closure at this point, but the DNR is ready to issue that, and we were working, actually working through those issues when all this was filed, so.
Thank you for the distinction.
Councilmember Mukerhour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney Lawrence, and maybe Mr. Davis needs to chime in, too, but we all up here, as Mr. Peschall kind of stated, we should know this, but the people at home and those reporting on this, maybe briefly describe the liability that the city is in, if we have any liability in the current situation that.
In both of these, neither the RDA nor this, the city has been named, we are not a party to the financing, and that's what this relates to, is the financing and the construction costs. With regard to the TIF, we structured that as a pay-as-you-go financing, so when they make their tax payment in January or through the schedule, yep, thank you, we take the tax dollars, and then we turn around and repay some, or in this case, most of the tax dollars back to them, again, in repayment of those extraordinary development costs and public infrastructure costs that they had upfront paid for.
And when a developer is not in compliance with the agreement, if they are in default, we have remedies to protect ourselves from those payments, is that my understanding?
Correct.
And City Attorney Lawrence sent a letter back in May identifying that it was, it was a notice of default.
That they were in default, and that at that point in time, unless all of the instances of default were corrected, the city would not be making that this year's pay-go payment.
So, they did make their tax payment this year, however, it was really more motivated by the liquor license than it was anything else, but we keep the foreclosure issue, immediately put it back in default.
Good, thank you.
Looks like there was a couple of professional service agreement items on there, was there anything you wanted to highlight on there?
No, if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
All right, and I just have placed in council's packets, just a couple, or a little handful of notes from the Urban Alliance that City Manager and myself attended in Racine, the theme was municipal collaboration for resilient communities. Since I did put those notes into your packets, I'll just leave it to you to ask me any further questions, and we can take it from there. I also have materials here, if anybody's interested, that we brought back.
Thank you for providing this to us.
All right, and we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.